Okay, the time is now six o'clock and I call to order this April second, two thousand twenty-five council workshop. We will begin first on the agenda with the consolidated five-year action plan, uh, community development block grant. Mary, I think you're you're back there. So there you are, Mary. Oh, I'm sorry. I saw you, Mary. Sorry.
Thanks, Mary. Good evening, uh, council. Troy Truax with Michael Baker. We are doing this project for Mary and the boroughs, so. So I'll just go through, um, I don't know if you have to open the public hearing or I was gonna give a short presentation on the consolidated plan for the boroughs. So if you want me to proceed, I may.
The the public hearing is open.
Okay, it's all reopened. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. So, uh, this project, I won't take too long with this presentation, but, um, and this is for the, uh, Stephanie has the file, of course, but both the county and the borough are entitlement communities under HUD. Both in the county receives CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, as well as home. The borough receives CDBG funds. As part of that requirement, you can go to the next slide, Stephanie. The borough is required, along with the county, so we're doing this as a joint project between the county and the borough. Every five years you have to update your consolidated plan, and that also includes preparing the year-one action plan. Uh, so every of those, each of those five years requires that year-one action plan. So what the the the, uh, the plan does, the five-year plan, is really, um, help provide a framework of HUD's priorities and programs, um, in terms of of looking at affordable housing, community development needs. Also has some market analysis involved in it as well to try to identify those needs. We've done a lot of stakeholder engagement. One of these slides will show, uh, the engagement that's required under Code of Federal Regulations. And then, too, one of the things that we're looking forward to is we always have to anticipate that the plans have to be submitted to HUD by May fifteenth. That only can happen until HUD confirms your allocation. So we're asking you to evaluate and consider your consolidated plan and year-one action plan with the caveat that we're still waiting on HUD to confirm that number. We're we're kind of racing to the finish line of May fifteenth. That's the deadline. But like, uh, you may have experienced last year, as well as the county, HUD never confirmed that year-one allocation until like June or July. So we'll just kind of get this ready, hopefully that you will, uh, prove it, if you will, albeit maybe a condition, but really trying to get it ready so we're not missing a beat on that submission deadline. Uh, next slide. Again, for the, some of the goals here, provide decent housing, uh, probably preserving the affordable housing stock, increasing the availability of affordable housing. Also investments go to provide suitable living environments through safer, more livable neighborhoods. Sidewalk improvements are kind of a classic example of how your funds are used. And also, uh, shop steadings, some economic opportunities in downtown you're quite aware of. Next slide. Just some simple data. A lot of the information that's in the analysis of impediments has this information. Uh, but again, this kind of just, uh, tells the story in terms of, uh, the affordability issue, uh, with housing. I think we all can understand that. That's been on everybody's radar, uh, for a long time. Uh, next slide also has some data snapshots of where median household income, uh, the dark red are where you have percentage of low to moderate income populations. So certainly the borough is kind of at the center with some of the other, uh, kind of, uh, population centers. Again, some of the outlier areas, uh, some of the rural townships, just because of their lower population, you're gonna see those numbers increase there as well. Um, next slide, Stephanie. So the consult, uh, consultation and citizen participation, this was very significant. This is one of the first things that we started off with last June and July. We had a series of focus groups. Uh, we have a laundry list of individuals from across the county, as well as the borough. Safe Harbor, for example, a lot of the organizations that you know, had a lot of good participation in the focus groups. Also, we had a public survey that ran, uh, was open all the way from last summer, all the way through January. We got a little good, a lot of good input, uh, from that as well. One of the key kind of, uh, areas where we kind of pulled everybody together as stakeholders was the Housing Summit. Mayor Schultz, thanks for your comments, uh, there. That was well received. Uh, but that was a great way to kind of think about more beyond just, hey, what do we need to do as a community to try to tackle these problems? So that was kind of a, second time we did that, was very well attended, uh, very well received, and hopefully there's a lot of good things coming out of that moving forward. This just gives you a rundown. Um, so we had six focus groups, that one Housing Summit. We had the public survey with, uh, over four hundred responses. Uh, we've had two public meetings back in January for the analysis of impediments, and we had a public meeting on February twenty-sixth. And then we're also required to do a public hearing here with the borough, and the county also has to do a public hearing, this was yesterday, um, to get input. The next slide, analysis of impediments, that's kind of one of those data kind of analyses in terms of market analysis. But really what it does is what are the impediments to fair housing, um, if you will? If you go to the next slide, um, some of the requirements for the analysis of impediments, identify those impediments to fair housing choice, uh, take the appropriate actions to overcome the effects of identified impediments, and maintain those appropriate records. And if you go to the next, uh, slide, uh, for example, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, they identify a lack of transportation, poor economic development, lack of affordable housing, gentrification, and landlord policies. I know, uh, Cumberland County Housing Authority has been doing a great job of putting on some clinics for landlords, but all these topics, uh, they were identified by our focus groups. In addition to, if you go to the next slide, uh, these were a number of the other impediments to fair housing that we heard, both at the county level and here at the borough level. So again, I won't go into detail, but these are probably very well-known and understood, uh, by what you're saying. And I know, uh, the chamber also had a breakfast here last fall, I think, uh, one of the present, so a lot of similar things were echoed, uh, there at that event as well. The next slide here, consolidated planning goals, really in terms of what HUD's focused on in these plans is maintain and increase affordable housing, reduce blight conditions, improve public facilities, provide vital public services, enhance economic opportunities. Then if you go the next slide, um, just to kind of give you a snapshot, at the county level, uh, they get approximately over that five-year period, about six million dollars of CDBG funds, and they get about two million dollars in home funds. And you can see, uh, what their, uh, goal objectives are and desired outcomes for the use of those funds. And if you go to the very next slide, these are their specific investment areas: homeownership, owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, economic development, shop steading, facade improvement, public services, and public facilities. So again, that's where those funds are being invested. And then likewise for the borough, over that five-year period, your, uh, allocation almost is about one point seven five million. Doesn't take a lot to spend that, uh, level of money, as we know. It seems like a big number, but in the end of the day, it's, uh, you could use a lot more, I'm sure. But again, these are your objectives and desired outcomes. These are specified in your consolidated plan. And if you go to the next page, um, your specific investment areas are code enforcement, economic development and shop steading, owner-occupied housing rehab, public facilities, including sidewalks, parks and recreation, LED lighting, et cetera, and then, uh, public services, and specifically hope station and police patrols is where some specific examples, uh, for the borough for those investments. Next slide, this plan has been out for a thirty-day public comment period. That started at the end of February and went through the end of March. I don't think we really got any comments. Um, I think maybe through some of the initial public meetings, we got a few comments back, but, uh, nothing, uh, of of any substance yet. So we'll continue to to see if there's any additional comments, uh, that are coming out of this hearing. And then this final slide in terms of next steps, yesterday was the county's hearing, today is your hearing, and then what we're shooting for is that May fifteenth date, to have the plans ready to be submitted, and they have to be adopted. But we can only submit them once we know those numbers. So again, it's a little bit of a wait game, uh, with HUD. And then your year-one action plan, your program year begins July one. So hopefully I didn't go through that too fast, but, uh, I think there's a lot of familiar information that you've seen before. I'm happy to get any questions you have.
Any questions? Not to to the substance of this necessarily, but just the the process. I know HUD has been subject to some staff layoffs and cuts and whatever's happening there. Did, any sense of that, that delaying these numbers even further than?
Mary and I just talked about that before. I might, I might actually ask Mary. She's the one that's on with the phone with HUD on a consistent basis. Mary, I don't know, put you on the spot, but.
Well, it's it's good you have somebody to be on the phone with HUD, so.
Yeah.
So the staffing changes haven't affected the day-to-day operations. In fact, they're still running pretty strong. Last year, the excuse for being delayed was that there was some transitions at the highest levels of HUD. Now, that being said, a lot of the highest levels of HUD that currently exist accepted the buyout. So I'm really not sure if that's gonna be the delay again. But currently, the staffing is is pretty good on the the day-to-day level to talk to and answer questions. But the excuse last time why it was delayed was upper-level management had retired or transitioned out or accepted promotions. This time around, a lot of those higher-level management have accepted that buyout, so we're probably, if it's the same excuse, we're gonna run into the same problem.
Yeah, we were, we were scrambling a bit. Last year, I know the county was also.
Yeah, because what I would have proceeded to remind everybody is unfortunately, again, your staff were fantastic about trying to balance this. Your program year starts, and so does the county's, July one. Even if they don't tell us what money we get until August first, they're still holding you to that July first date. So your clock started ticking July one, even if they didn't tell you till August one what your cash was or what you had to budget for. So you're you're really at their whims. And so it's, again, I appreciate what what Troy and Michael Baker are doing, trying to make sure we're ahead of the game in case. Because again, you're you're sort of just held to the, to the rules. But I would, if it's gonna be the same excuse, I I think it's gonna be pushed because of the upper-level management changes, as they say.
Right, okay. All right, thanks, Mary. Any, anything else? Mitch, you had?
I do, I actually do have a question just regarding, um, because you also did the, uh, county plan, and I guess I'm, I haven't had a chance to read through the county plan yet. Are there any, like, um, major sort of, like, um, differences at all, like, I guess in terms of, like, like what we're looking at with the county versus Carlisle?
There's a lot of similarities. In fact, they're kind of modeled after each other. Uh, I think there's a lot of good consistency there. It only comes down to in terms of what the county's purview is, in terms of Mary's organization, that Housing Authority, what they invest in, and they actually have, you know, housing products and and and, uh, affordable housing units that they manage. You 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 don't, although you are using some of your funds to maybe buy lighted properties, to fix them up, right down the street from, uh, down here is a good example. So yeah, that's only kind of the difference in terms of, but yeah, CDBG, you know, you solicit inputs from people that wanna have, you know, we, we're an organization, we need funds. Uh, Safe Harbor, for example, always goes to the county. I don't know if they've ever come to the borough for funding, uh, with Scott Schull or not, but really, there's not a lot of differences. There's a lot of similarities, which you'll see there in terms of their, uh, objectives and the investment areas. There's a little bit of nuances there, too, but really not a lot, not a lot of differences.
Anything else? Okay. Are there any questions or comments from public? Stephanie, do we have anybody online? Hand up. Nope? Okay. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Okay. Then, uh, the hearing is adjourned, and we'll roll right into the, uh, the workshop meetings. Please, please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance. First, under citizens to be heard, is an opportunity for anyone who would like to be heard on any issue of borough government. You may come up to the podium and and say your piece. Okay, come on up.
Hey, everybody. Uh, and we should say our name and address.
Name and address, you got it.
Uh, John Werner, one fifty-seven South Pitt.
Tina Ziegler, one twenty East Louther.
So we're here today, uh, to present to all of you esteemed borough councillors, a draft sample welcoming city ordinance. This is something that Dawkins County is considering, and a bunch of municipalities throughout Pennsylvania, the ACLU just released kind of language and guidelines about it. We're just bringing it for, for you guys to consider it. I'm gonna pass it out, and Tina is gonna, you know, answer questions or say whatever.
So, um, this is slightly different from the welcoming America that I think a lot of folks are, um, hearing a lot about right now. That is more in-depth, that is more, um, taking a cohesive look across your entire community. Um, this ordinance specifically targets, um, how the borough responds to requests from Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or Customs and Border Patrol. Um, this would specifically outline, um, the borough's duties, right, to comply with federal law, but will also say that it is the, like, it's the duty of federal officials to employ that law. And so, um, just kind of some things ahead of, like, some questions you might have. Dawkins County is considering this. Um, their solicitors were less concerned with, um, the contents of the ordinance. This is also, like, kind of married between Carlisle ordinances and the ACLU language, so I invite you to, um, maybe look at some other languages. But, um, in talking with, like, ACLU lawyers and immigrants' rights advocates from, like, the Pennsylvania Immigration Coalition, um, they have had no reason to believe that passing something like this increases, um, targeting of communities. Philadelphia has not seen an increased targeting, uh, of communities after passing something like this. There are other places in the Commonwealth that have adopted things like this. State College, uh, Council, um, adopted something in twenty seventeen, very similar to this, um, quoting them, quoting that ordinance. State College Council believes that enforcing immigration law is a federal responsibility and not the responsibility of local officials. Um, and so that is the similar theme. Um, also, in twenty fourteen, um, backing up towards when there was a, um, American citizen detained by ICE and in Pennsylvania facilities, and there was this big litigation. Butler County Prison came out with a policy in twenty fourteen, talking about how they would handle, um, ICE cases and things like that. Uh, and so I would also invite you to look at Butler County Prisons. Butler County is a little bit smaller than Cumberland County, um, and they have, uh, a county jail like Dawkins County. And so just thinking about sizes and other locations in the Commonwealth. And then finally, I understand that this is something that the borough would have to put labor into. This would be variable upkeep. Um, it would cause the borough to need to evaluate current forms and how they take in information, also how the Carlisle Police, um, takes in information and things like that. So it is an upfront ask of labor. But once that labor is done, it's simply in practice that we're no longer going to do those things. Same thing with creating trainings under Section ten. So the evaluations are in Section four, they're listed, uh, in Section four of those. The upkeep there, and then also in Section ten. Same thing with creating trainings. Once those trainings are created, they're created, and then it's just a matter of continuing to implement them. And so we are here because we care, um, and then we'll see you next week. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Beth. Any, anyone else? Yep. Stephanie, no one, no one on Zoom? Okay. Move on to, uh, presentations, and Mindy, you're, you're up. Mindy, if you wanna come, come on up.
Mary will actually. So we're taking partnership. I'm just gonna do the introduction, because I'm letting Mindy handle, handle everything. But, um, basically, uh, as many of you recall, the borough went through some significant changes around two thousand eight with the closure of a number of manufacturing facilities, and, um, it set into motion a lot of redevelopment activity. And as part of that, a program was put together called Carlisle Works. And this was a grant from the EPA, so the Environmental Protection Agency, and it was their Environmental Workforce Development and Job Training Program. Very literal. In any case, it's a very competitive program. And, uh, the idea is to train individuals to be able to do any number of tasks related to environmental cleanup. But you come out of these programs essentially with every skill set possible. So you name the certification, they receive it, and it's free of charge, and it's sort of preps a person to be able to enter into any, any related jobs, usually with construction or engineering companies. And the reason why the EPA looked so fondly on the borough was there was the number of these closures, we have great partnerships, the Employment Skill Center is a great resource, and so you really had all the tools and the population. I mean, honestly, these facilities closed in in, uh, areas that are well over fifty percent low to moderate income. So essentially around twenty sixteen, the borough, uh, the Redevelopment Authority and the Employment Skills Center's partnership was awarded two hundred thousand dollars of this funding, and I stress, it's incredibly competitive. So kudos to the the people for me who who went through this. And so that program was incredibly successful. Uh, Mindy will talk about that. And so the Employment Skill Center approached the Redevelopment Authority and said, we're, we're looking to go after this again. Can we partner again? And, uh, they were so successful this time around that they actually received five hundred thousand from the EPA in another incredibly, uh, competitive situation. So it's, and now you're, you're past those closures. So it just means that the money was managed well, the program was successful, and the EPA looks fondly on the borough and all the resources that are here. So I'll let Mindy turn it over and talk about, uh, this new program, this new grant, and where everything's going.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mindy Tremblay. I'm the executive director at the Employment Skill Center. And, um, as Mary said, it is a highly competitive grant. It is a national grant with the EPA. And, um, last year, we were one of only fourteen awarded across the country. So, um, there are some exciting new things about this contract, aside from the fact that, um, it did increase significantly in the amount of funding, but also, um, it is a five-year contract. So, um, I'm gonna go through just kind of an overview of the project, and this is really just informational. We worked very closely with Redevelopment Authority and the borough, a lot of industry experts, um, and really just, um, a lot of individuals in the region, the first time around, uh, to see that kind of success, and it requires the same sort of collaboration and partnerships this time around. Um, and we, you'll see here in a minute, we do have an advisory panel, um, that has met. Susan Armstrong is a part of that, and, um, as well as Mary and, um, a representative from KEDIC, and, um, some industry experts, because we are an adult education and training facility. We are not experts in, uh, the environmental, uh, training field. So we rely on a lot of collaboration. There we go. So, um, these are just some pictures. These were our students the last time around. Uh, we held the contract from, with the Redevelopment Authority from two thousand sixteen to two thousand nineteen, um, and had, had about three and a half cohorts, uh, three full cohorts and and a mini cohort, um, and saw a lot of success. And the goal isn't just, um, obviously it's to complete the program, earn the certifications. We want to see people employed in this field, but, um, a lot of these individuals were also continuing their education in this field. So we want to see that from a hundred percent of the graduates, either continuing education and/or employment in the field. So we've already mentioned some of this information here. You know it is a, a strong partnership with the Redevelopment Authority. We, you'll see a list of certifications, uh, that the, uh, participants will receive, and as Mary mentioned, it is all free of charge. Um, one thing I would like to highlight this time around, that was a huge selling point, is, um, there was a good chunk of this funding, uh, that could go directly back to the participants in the form of supportive services, and one of those is through a stipend. So this is a full-time, uh, course for about eight and a half to nine weeks. We've had a year's worth of changes in paperwork, so I, I don't know if it's gonna be eight and a half or nine weeks. Cause we've had some, uh, had to change some of the the course modules, but, um, so that's, that's a huge incentive because if folks are reliant on, on their income from whatever job they may have, um, and, you know, they have families full-time for eight and a half to nine weeks is is difficult, even when you are going through a training that is free. So being able to offer a stipend bi-weekly for those participants was, uh, really a huge selling point for us when we were considering, um, applying for the grant. So the plan is, um, to have about three years' worth of, um, the actual programming. We have a whole year on the backend that is for tracking, job placement, all of that support. But we'd like to run five cohorts, uh, sixty participants. Um, we're not limited to that. That's sort of the minimum that we're looking for. Um, there are some eligibility requirements, but they're pretty basic. There's not an income eligibility requirement, even though, um, our target population is going to be what we see at the Employment Skill Center, which is the majority, uh, low to moderate income individuals, individuals that fall into the categories of dislocated, disadvantaged, um, underemployed and unemployed. The minimum age is eighteen. As you can imagine, they are working with a lot of different equipment and and other things. Uh, so it is a safety, there are safety reasons. Um, there are some background checks involved. Um, and they really just have to be in the south-central PA region, uh, which is nice. It's not just the Carlisle Borough or Cumberland County, even though that was the majority of our participants, uh, last time around, and that is, this is certainly our target area, um, for this project. This is a flyer. If you can see the small font at the top, it says spring, but I mentioned that year's worth of changes of paperwork. So our target is later this summer for our first cohort. Uh, we are still in the process of filling gaps with partnerships. It's kind of another reason to get this information out there, because we would love to see more partnerships with some industry experts and, um, some post-secondary institutions, uh, to help this course come together. Um, these are the six certifications involved. I will mention each of those. OSHA thirty for construction, Hazwakr forty, um, those are the hours, forty hours. Um, asbestos inspection, confined space entry, that's my nightmare, just wanna point that out. Lead paint, uh, lead-based paint inspection, and then first aid CPR, AED. Anyone that was familiar, the last time around, forklift certification was included. That was one that was removed this time. And as mentioned before, there is no cost for eligible participants, and we have, uh, not just the stipend, but all of their safety gear, any gear, equipment, supplies that they will need for this project. It is completely covered. Um, and you'll see in a minute, we have some other partnerships to help, um, eliminate some other barriers for participants to attend the course. I will not read all of these. These are some of the highlights from the course. There's a lot that is packed in to those eight and a half to nine weeks. But one thing I do wanna call out, and if you're familiar with what you, we do, you know this already. Um, we have a pretty large workforce development side of what we do, because adult education, it is workforce development. Employability skills or soft skills, they mean the same thing. Um, that is integrated into everything that we do because still to this day, when we talk to employers, that is the number one thing that they say is a challenge for them, is folks that are showing up on time, um, that work well as a team, that communicate effectively. All of those things that help you get a job and keep a job, um, because most of the times they tell us we can train them. They love if they're already trained. That's, that's part of the goal here, is to to help people upskill, but it's those soft skills, um, that are really important. So that is built into the program, and I'll kind of skip to the end. And, um, we talk about job readiness. We're talking about financial literacy. We really want this to be a well-rounded program. We'll have industry experts come in and do mock interviews that, if we're being truthful, last time around, those were interviews for jobs. And, um, and then what's not listed here, but something that we're gonna work with, the Career Link and and SCPA works on, is, um, a career expo as well, so that we really put the, the participants in a, um, good position to be hired once they complete this program. We're on twenty-nine South Hannover Street. I know many of you know that, and I'd just like to point out, this isn't a, a classroom. They're not gonna be in a classroom for these nine, eight and a half, nine weeks. They will be out on work sites. They will be out on work sites, they will do field trips, they will be off-site, as you can imagine, we're doing Hazwakr or confined space entry training at our location. But they really get to get out there, it's hands-on, they get to get this experience and they are getting that experience with companies who could potentially hire them. Alright, some of our partners, I've already mentioned some of them, we are in discussions with both Schibensburg and Harrisburg University. We have talked to Dickinson, I know their Center for Land Use and Sustainability, that may not, that ship. I was close, I had sustainability, yes, we have been in touch with them, I know that there have, the departments that we worked with last time have downsized, so, but we did, our students did get to go over and have a tour of that center. Which was a great experience for them as well, they got to go to the water treatment plant here in the Borough. We actually had some students interview for those, for some positions over there as well. I mentioned some industry experts that, that have been a big part of this. I do wanna point out one thing, I talked about those supportive services. So Project Share, if you're familiar with them, they have a program called Share the Health Box. Many of our students, specifically in our Nurse Aid Program benefit from that. So while they are in their, you know, three, four weeks of training, they will get a box of fresh produce, easy recipes, anything that they need for those recipes. So that is eliminating one barrier while also getting, kinda sliding in some nutrition education. And that is something that Project Share has agreed to do for this program as well. So again, we're, we're trying to, it's not just to incentivize, it's to really help people be successful in this program, have one less thing to, to be concerned about at the end of the day. Alright, some local and regional employers, some of our past participants were hired by some of these individual, or some of these agencies, excuse me. And then there are some others that are on this list that are actually currently hiring right now, whether it's for environmental technician positions. Surveying, that's huge, when we've talked to a lot of folks, there's a, a big need for surveying. As Mary mentioned, some of the sites, we've talked about, you know, the Maslin site, we know we have Frog Switch now and some others. They either still have to be assessed or have been assessed and the redevelopment has to happen, so these are all potential jobs for our participants. Alright, this is a slide I put into all, I just slid it into all of our workforce development presentations. What we do is an investment in people, it's an investment in the community and the workforce. And I'd like to show both sides of it because it's not just the job seeker, the person that, that needs the training, they need the opportunity, they need the higher wage. And they need a career path, but it's, the benefit is, it goes both ways, it's for the employers as well, they need highly skilled workers, they need workers that if they can invest in them, they know they will stay. And you know, that speaks to increase in productivity, reduce unemployment costs, all of those things, so I think that's important and that's something that when we talk to employers that we stress because we really are just trying to fill that gap. This is our tentative course schedule, tentative being the key word. This is our goal, not sure if it's lofty yet because we are still filling some of those gaps. But this is the plan, we have a, a good bit of time built in because of those supportive services and, and the job placement and assistance. But we're excited about this program, if you can't tell already. We've been looking forward to this for, for a few years now, we appreciate the support of the Borough, all of our partners. The redevelopment authority, of course, being administrator of the grant, and we're happy to answer any questions.
I saw Council Mellon positioning the microphone, so I started.
I, I love that the stipends included this time, that's fantastic, it really helps to remove barriers, like you said. One of the other significant barriers to a program like this is very often transportation.
Yes.
And getting to the training sites.
Yes.
Do you have a plan for that?
We do, we have funds for gas cards and then if someone does not have a vehicle, there is some flexibility with the funds for things like Rideshare, Ubers, that kinda thing. Not necessarily ideal when you're talking about job sites that could be in different locations. If the bus system could get everyone where they needed to go, we could certainly do bus passes, but there, there is funding and I should have had that in there, so that's a good question, thank you.
This is awesome and I, I like, I shared it when you did it the first time because I live across from the Tire and Wheel and, you know, there, with all the work that has been done, I was, you know, excited about it last time. I, I echo Counselor Mellon's statement because the stipend is like, I'm not saying it's a full game changer, but it really is because when, when I heard the amount of the grant, I'm like, oh man, I really hope there's a stipend and there it was. Because it really, it, it shows that there, yes, I understand people will be like, it's a free program, but the investment of, of helping them get through those hurdles. And the investment that you said about, you know, employers and, and the businesses, but also I appreciate, this is, this is, first of all, I always think that your depart, your, your organization just flies under the radar just a little bit too much because I think people don't realize just how impactful the work that you do is. And, and that's why investing in your department and your organization can help these things keep happening. Yes, this is a huge grant and five hundred thousand dollars just doesn't appear. But, but I think that it's, it's, you told the story wonderfully and I can't wait to hear more about the folks that get to go through it, but I do wanna let you know that this and, and how you're connecting with everyone, the, the share boxes, you know, Project Share is helping. And all of these small little stories that don't always come out, I appreciate that you tell it, I, and I'm proud to be in Carolina with y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
I love this, I think that this is so wonderful, I also love the idea of the stipends. Because that can be something that can hold people back is, you know, not getting paid while they're doing their training. I love this, I support this one hundred percent. If it's that I need to share it on social media, if I need to send it out, I mean, you know, my circle is a little different than it used to be, but I share it out however needs to be shared, I think this is great. And I'm very appreciative of the unemployment, the Employment Skills Center, I think this is something that's really important and, and, and at a good time. So thank you both for the work that you're doing and I'm glad to see that Susan is on the advisory council, so.
Thank you. Part of, part of that paperwork change was increasing the stipend too. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mary, thank you, Mindy. I hope as you go through those cohorts, feel free to come back and, and tell the story a little bit more. I was a hundred percent listening to, yeah, everything that, that you talked about, but I was also just curious how much the Hazwakr forty would cost if you were just trying to do that, it's like two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars, just do the training that I found online that you can do. And that's huge for the target population that you're, you're looking at, I mean, that's something they wouldn't otherwise be able to afford. So thank you, thank you for putting this together. And next time around, eight hundred thousand, I guess, if you.
Let's hope, let's hope, I mean, the biggest chunk goes to the training, so.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, I will entertain a motion to review and approve the March fifth, two thousand twenty-five workshop meeting minutes.
So moved.
It's a motion by Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Stube, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay, motion carries. PRCP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item, I move that Council appoint Ms. Misty Atkins to a first full term on the Borough of Carlisle's Pension Advisory Commission. The term will be retroactive to April first, twenty twenty-five and shall expire March thirty-first, twenty thirty.
Council Mellon makes a motion to reappoint Misty Atkins to a first full term on the Borough of Carlisle's Pension Advisory Commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Perry, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay, motion carries. Thank you, Council Mellon. Sustainable Community and Economic Planning.
I have two items on my agenda tonight, Mr. Mayor. First is that Borough Council may consider approving submission of the Borough of Carlisle's five-year consolidated plan for years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine and furthermore, the Borough Council, that Borough Council may approve the submission of the twenty twenty-five year one action plan.
Council Charles, we accept a motion to approve the submission of the Borough of Carlisle's fi- five-year consolidated plan for years twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine and to approve the submission of the twenty twenty-five year one action plan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay, motion carries.
And then our second item for tonight is the land use reform date.
I think I, I put together like nine slides, so just bear with me, countdown. Yeah, it's been, it's been a few months since I provided an update of the Borough Council's Land Use Reform Subcommittee. So we'll kinda kick off twenty twenty-five with a, with a few reforms that we'll be bringing you for consideration next week, as well as a couple items that we just wanna bring to your attention. So the, the several things that are ready for action, I'll just go through them slide by slide, you can kinda see a snapshot right here if you wanna advance to the next one. So artists and industry, we've talked about this a few times over the last year. Staff finally had a, a chance to kinda go through the ordinance and do the kinda track changes thing to, you know, make the modifications ready for the Borough Solicitor. We gave Solicitor Brenneman a sort of advanced copy of the text amendments a couple of weeks ago. And this is, this is, the text is drafted, obviously, once it goes through Solicitor Review, it's subject to change, but this is the substance. So artists and industry would be a use that provides for small-scale manufacturing and also allows, you know, goods to be sold or tasted by the public on-site. Those, those goods that are produced on, on, on the property. It limits the scale to ten thousand square feet and no more than ten employees occupying the space at any given time. And I'll just sort of highlight that component of this use because scaling industrial uses is, is sort of very important for different contexts. This, you know, sort of reduces that sort of factory mindset down to a fairly small space. So we're not talking about the great big factories that might, you know, be more appropriate with great big setbacks and things like that, we're talking small-scale use, ten thousand square feet or less. We added a minimum parking requirement, just to sort of go with what we have in, in the existing zoning, which does address parking. And it sort of clarifies that artists and industry would not be treated as a tavern. You know, so this is sort of your bar scene if you're producing alcoholic beverages. And it makes a distinction for restaurants, again, with regard to alcoholic beverages. Pennsylvania has been sort of a unique place for me to work, there's a real focus on booze in this, in the Commonwealth. So again, we, we wanted to add some some new land use opportunities that sort of fit with what, what people in the state are comfortable with. As well as open up some new markets. This would be available in all the commercial districts, all the industrial districts and urban mixed-use. Another, another standard that's sort of, it's been on, you know, it's been on my mind for a while. But the urban mixed-use zoning district, you know, the, the standards are, are pretty specific within zoning ordinance, if you deviate from the standards, any relief would be only, you know, given by the zoning hearing board. But there are several guidelines within the urban mixed-use zoning district, which Council can kinda consider. One of the standards that have been, that has been a little bit problematic for staff is, is in front of you, so building entrances in the UM Urban Mixed Use District currently just have to be open to the outside. When you think about it in urban context, I, you know, the picture on the lower right side is, you know, Urbanville USA, I don't know where it is. But it, you know, it shows buildings that are close to a street. It also shows entrances, you know, for the public or any, anybody that would sort of be looking at it from their car, walking by entrances to the building at the street level. This is urban context. It's something quite different when the entrance is on the other side of the building, facing a parking lot. And all that you have facing the street is, say, a service door or, or maybe no entrances at all. It really defines the space and it really helps set the context. So the current standard again would allow buildings that meet our build-two zone, which is fairly close to the street. But it would also allow you currently to put your entrance and everything that appears like a building entrance on the parking lot side, so your building's close to the street, your entrance is internal. That's suburban context and in some, in some ways, it's worse in suburban context because you can't even see how to get into the building unless you go around the parking lot side. This very small but impactful change would require developers as a standard in the zoning ordinance to put the entrance facing the street. Now, it seems small, but I'll, I'll tell you, it's not worth debating, I, the staff don't wanna have that debate anymore and that's what this does.
Jared, on, on that last issue, we, we've had to try to negotiate that through land development. I know at least in one, one case and it wasn't an easy negotiation.
It's, it's not. What the, you know, with respect to developers, I mean, they're, they're not bad and we have to work with them. You know, obviously the Borough's not making these significant investments all over the, all over the place. And what they're working with is, is a, a consumer that's used to suburban shopping centers. They're used to strip malls, they're used to kinda the big box suburban feel. And the, the code gently pushes a more efficient market where you have more infill opportunity, where those parking lots are close to the street. You have the chance to sort of fill in these, these places with new buildings. So where the developers are really catering to that suburban market, that consumer that's used to that. You know, they're, they're thinking that the path of least resistance is to continue that sort of pattern of, of physical form. And, you know, to the best of staff ability, we're gently pushing back. You know, an urban mixed-use zoning district ought to result in urban form, so that's where we're at.
Yeah, they, they tend to oftentimes come in with sort of preformed plans that they've used elsewhere that they can just kinda drop in and unless you sort of force this through ordinance, you're oftentimes stuck with just begging and pleading, really.
Yep, very much so. You know, we like to make it as predictable as we can for the developers, reduce their costs, their uncertainty. But at the same time, if it's something this important, we'll push back.
Yeah, okay, thanks, sorry to derail you, I thought that was West Palm Street there, but.
Minimum bicycle parking standards. Staff have floated this a couple of times to developers with no objection, I think I've briefed Council on this a couple of times again, we just had the chance to you know, write up the text amendment so that, you know, it's doing what we've asked developers politely to do, which is provide some bike, bike parking. Just to kinda give you some perspective, the staff routinely do zoning permits, you know, we review zoning permits which get triggered by new uses, new land use activities, it can also get triggered by a, a change of use to an existing building. So going from, say, a, a restaurant to an office would require a change of use. When we review those applications, we check the parking minimums, just to make sure that it, it sort of complies with the minimum vehicle parking. We don't have a requirement to add, you know, bike wrecks. Borough Council's adopted a strategic plan that encourages active transportation. We've got a resolution that, that encourages sort of the reduction of serious injuries and fatalities in, in a transportation system to zero. You know, the standard sort of acknowledges that it's important and it encourages this. You know, the standard sort of acknowledges that it's important and it encourages this over time. So it's scaled for big parking lots. So if you have a parking lot with ten or more spaces, we want you to have some bike racks. We don't think it's too burdensome because there's a cutoff at twenty, twenty spaces. So again, sort of a general standard that encourages things over time. Hopefully that makes sense.
Can I just quickly say that? Thank you, first of all, but I know that some people might say that this, you know, there's always a naysayer and some people might say that this isn't needed, but it is needed because I have taken pictures of the places that I've seen consistently with bikes that didn't have a bike rack and they were, and I'll actually, I'll say one because it, it has a bike rack now, which was, I, I go to grocery stores. So Giant always had one and Wise Markets did not, and people would, would tether it everywhere. And I even messaged the corporate WISEs and they said, you have to get the local to do it. So instead of corporate helping out the store to get a bike rack, they put it on the very slim budget. Somehow, one day, it is there and I was very excited about it. But I see it in lots of places and they will tether them wherever they can and lots of people bike there. And it's not just like, you know, the people that bike just because they're, people that bike because they need it. And so I just wanted to say that people might not believe that this is needed, but this is needed. Also, the housing that we put in, or that we approved at the old Tyrell Hill site, the first section did not have any bike racks. And there are bikes all behind there because they live near there. And we pushed to have the veterans housing have bike racks and that one bike rack is full if you drive, if you go by it. So it is being used and I just want to say that I appreciate that we just have just a base level, just to make sure that those people are covered. Thank you.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah. Again, developers really have been pushed back on this, so we, we don't anticipate any problems. So next, this is sort of a cleanup. Borough Code addresses, you know, some of the licensing requirements for massage therapist businesses. It's, it's an old code. You know, there is a current license requirement, so we're consolidating some of the uses that don't address the license requirement. And we're making sure that that just sort of carries through. So this is a bit of a cleanup. Next. I did want to mention that there's some overlap. You know, we, we run a pretty efficient staff. Borough Manager Armstrong encourages us to, to sort of work between, you know, departments and, and make sure that we're not duplicating efforts, but also recognizing that, you know, there's some overlap. So Land Use Reform Subcommittee has some overlap with some of the Vision Zero initiatives, some of the things that the Shade Tree Commission's doing, as well as climate action. And just to be efficient, there are two sort of emerging items that we're, we're considering. We're looking at electric vehicle charging stations, sort of where it makes sense to add some convenience to consumers in the borough, add some new markets and improve air quality. We're also looking at maximum vehicle parking. You know, to sort of look at some of those big parking lots that potentially could have some infill or some redevelopment. You know, if, if those new developers want to continue that large parking area, it might be appropriate to have some, you know, standard that pushes back on that and, and sort of adds for more efficient use of the space. So that's what we're looking at for that. And then, of course, with Shade Tree and some of our standards related to curb and sidewalk maintenance, a lot of the sidewalks get heaved up by, you know, root damage. Borough Code requires that, you know, the, the sidewalk is flat or has gradual transitions, just so that it's safe for people. But there are costs in maintaining that, you know, a safe sidewalk system. And obviously, the intrinsic value of trees is important to the borough. So we're trying to be thoughtful about how we co-locate trees and sidewalks, just for kind of the long term. The Shade Tree Commission put together a very smart list of, of trees that they'd like to consider as, you know, suitable for streets. And we're sort of evaluating their list with regard to kind of these long-term impacts. Again, just to sort of be smart about where we place trees and, and how we plant them. We kicked off a project in, in twenty twenty-four that sort of looked at, you know, discretionary review, the costs associated with special exceptions and variances and things like this. And we, we, we had an intern at the time, Mon, Monsiret with Dickinson College. And she looked at the costs and the decisions and, you know, where, where the decisions were made and the frequency of decisions and all these different things, all of the borough. And that has translated, you know, lessons learned from that project into a more focused neighborhood review of some of the historic parts of the borough that still have that physical context where, you know, the old live-work, you know, apartments over, over, say, the, you know, small neighborhood store or the studio space, you can still kind of see it when you walk the streets and the sidewalks. But, you know, it's, it's disallowed in the zoning ordinance. So we're taking a hard look at that, just to consider if there's a way to maybe reduce some of the discretion, add some new markets to make it easier for people to do things where the physical, you know, setup is appropriate for maybe some non-residential uses. And that's, that's taking a little bit of time, but I did want to tell council that we're working on that. We're having, you know, a pretty specific mapping analysis where we look at some of the old sandborne fire insurance maps to see like the old building footprints and the materials that they were made of. The sandborne maps are really cool. They, they actually do talk about some of the uses of the buildings. We're looking at historical pictures and we're even talking to existing neighbors and some of the elders that still recall when some of those commercial uses were, were within the neighborhood, which are now zoned completely residential. I don't have anything more to present to you tonight, but I did think I'd mention it. Any questions about its presentation?
Thank you, Jared, for all this work. I guess, I, I, kind of going back to the bicycle parking, I think it would be, to me, I would, you know, and maybe this has been considered, but just sort of like having certain guidelines and standards around the types of bicycle parking. To me, there are really like two types of effective racks. It's like the inverted U rack or the post and ring rack, because you can pretty much lock any bike to that. The other types of racks are, can be difficult if you've got a basket in the front of your handlebars or your drop handlebars, or maybe you have a different type of frame that doesn't lock very easily to some of the other types of racks. And then also just making sure that, like, they're not placed in a way that would obstruct pedestrians. And then ideally, you know, encouraging some sort of covering too for the bikes, just because, especially, especially for like residential and long-term storage, it's really important because if it's a place you're going to park, park your bike and you live there, you know, if it's going to be out in the elements, you're going to have deal, to deal with corrosion and other issues. So if it's your sort of primary transportation, you know, otherwise you've just, you know, probably stored inside your apartment or, or house, wherever you live. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I know we had, we had a gentleman, Ralph, I, I missed your last name, but if you want to come up to the podium, I know you want to talk about. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're going to just jump right ahead to you. I'll need your name and address.
Okay, my name's Ralph Miller, one oh seven Warrington Road, Dillsburg.
And Tammy Miller, one oh seven Warrington Road, Dillsburg.
It saves me introducing her because I get in trouble if I don't. All right. Well, thank you for letting us come up and talk a little bit. I've been meeting with, with Jared and with Malcolm on this new zoning. And we're looking to come into Carlisle with our, with our business. And we're looking at the Field Millworks Building, the East High Street. And we are a craft distillery, Miller's Family Spirits. And under current zoning, we're, we're allowed for bottling, bottling operations. So we can mix and we can bottle and everything, but at this point, we can't do retail sales or any tastings of the products. So this zoning will definitely allow that. And so, you know, we're hoping that everything goes through and, and it works great. That we're working on all the other things that we need with, with the state and federal and all that to, to get approved. But like, we're not a typical distillery. We're not going to have a huge still in there, you know, heating everything up. You know, craft distillery, we're more of a mixing facility. So we buy bulk-based alcohol and then we mix our unique flavors with it. We bottle it up. And it's really tasty. And I know Jared said seemed alcohol is the thing for Pennsylvania or whatever, but, but we're not coming into this blind. We're actually partnering with Tennessee Legend Distillery down in Sevierville, Tennessee. They're a top five distillery in Tennessee. So they're going to be our partners. We're using all of their tried and true recipes, making some of our own unique flavors. But, so they're helping us get everything established, equipment-wise, material-wise, and going through everything we have to do, you know, with the federal and all that. So like I said, we're, we've got a good backing for us and we're looking forward to getting in here and being a part of Carlisle. And so what else are we going to say there? So, and we feel that going in down here where they're trying to rezone and everything, that we could be a good fit and a, and an anchor, you know, for that whole area to hopefully draw in some more, more retail businesses for you. So that's our hope. And I can go into a lot more about the distillery, but I'm just going to leave it at that for right now. We'll be back to some other meetings. So do you guys have any questions for us at all? I mean, we're just commenting here, but.
Any, any questions? No, go ahead.
How many employees do you have? You have, is it just you two or you're two-person operation right now?
Employees? Yep, you're looking at right. I do ninety percent, she does ten.
It's going to be a rough night, Ralph.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll be this, the mom and pop organization here until we, you know, get going, get flowing and then eventually, you know, have some people in helping out. But everything is, it's a truly artisan industry there because we fill all bottles by hand. We label them by hand, we cork them by hand, everything. So in your spare time, if you want to stop by, once we get set up, we'd more than happy to show you how to bottle and cork and, you know, it's a whole production. So, you know, you guys can stop down and you can help out and cork and stuff. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for telling your story.
Yeah, that's exactly why we were talking about the, the zoning ordinance, because it's, it's kind of, it's difficult. We've, we've run businesses through the, the wringer for something that clearly fits in, in, in the borough. So. I will say too, I, I attend, not exactly on point here, but I attended the opening yesterday of the Cat Cafe with my daughter, which is a big hit for my daughter. We had, we had a good, good time, but that's something, you know, I know they, they had and probably continue to have some, some sort of zoning gymnastics that they need to go through in the, in the, in the coming months. So where we can make businesses, make our zoning ordinances work in a way that makes sense in our, in our context. I think that it's better for everybody. So thanks, thanks for the update, Jared. Anything else on that? No? Okay. There is no new business. Is there any other public comment? Nothing online?
I just, I'm kind of curious regarding the welcoming ordinance. You know, assuming that this is something that we go through and it's something that council wants to pursue. You know, I'm, I'm kind of curious, like, what would the timeframe look for that? Because I know that's really kind of important because there are, you know, I mean, just last week, there were people who were taken and taken out of the country, you know. So I, I'm just kind of curious because I know there are people in our, in Carlisle who are, you know, scared right now. I think I'm just kind of curious if there's like.
Yeah, I, I know that I got a call Friday from, from one of the, the organizers of Imani who are concerned. As they got a concerned, concerned call that, you know, there could be an ICE raid on, on, on Imani. Of course, it was not. Imani was fantastic, by the way. But there's that concern out there clearly. And, and I know, you know, I've, I've seen the stories. And I know that one woman who was originally from Peru and here on a green card, that, that kind of hits home because there's, you know, we have, we have that in our, in our family. So clearly, you know, we want to, you know, take thoughtful consideration of this. I think what we need to do is, one, Tina, if you have that in a, in a Word doc or John, if you have that in a Word document that you could send, send to me. And then we can, we can send it on to, to staff and, and the solicitor, because we're going to want to make sure it kind of dovetails with our, our requirements. And then probably bring it back. It's probably going to take a couple workshops by the time we could get to it, to maybe the June, June workshop. Does that seem reasonable? Yeah. And then have a, have a further discussion on it then. Does that all make sense? I'm sort of presuming that the council wants to have something to consider. Yeah, okay.
And can I just say something? I know that we're at the, the end of our, our meeting and I was going to wait until next week at our council meeting to say it. But I just need to say, for anybody who's listening or watching this, if you're questioning why council is having these conversations, because it's been decided that we should only talk about our roads and streets and buildings and things. Those things are very important. That is what we are supposed to talk about. But we're also supposed to talk about things that affect our residents. We are also residents. We have the same concerns. And we are here because the residents elected us or asked us to be here. And that, that is something that's really important. We always have to think about everyone as humans. I know that, you know, we're, we've been called liberals and I'm not offended by that at all. I will say, I don't necessarily think of myself as that. I think of myself and all of us as humans. And we think about other humans, we care about other humans. I'm, I feel like I can speak for every one of us sitting here to say that we care. Not just about what our roads look like and what our finances are. We absolutely care about that too. Because trust me, riding around Carlisle today was not fun. But, but we also care about the people here. We are not here just to sit here and talk about this and talk about that. Things that happen on the federal level affect all of us and affects everybody that lives here. And, and, and we have, we share fears and we share concerns. This isn't me trying to lecture anybody. This is just me addressing some things and just to state that we care about people. And so there are things that, that we realize, you know, we can't affect the federal, but our voices are important for the people here to know that we do care about you all, we care about each other. And I'm thankful that, you know, you come to us and you ask us for these things because they are important. And, and it's important that we do have these conversations. So thank you for putting this together. I'm, I'm looking forward to having the conversation and, you know, moving forward in whatever way that looks. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to hold you up just a few more minutes, just to get that off of my mind because it's been there for the last almost month now. So that's it.
Yeah, I'd say it's more than fears and concerns and, 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 and sort of caring about the issue generally. It's, it's, it's having real impact on, on individuals. And folks who do, don't deserve what has happened to them. I noted the woman from Peru who was returning with, with her husband and, and was detained. I don't know if she's been released yet. There is a, a gentleman who's been here from El Salvador for, I don't know how many more, how many years, but his, his family sent his brother here and then his, him here when he was in his teens to escape the gangs in El Salvador who were trying, trying to take him from his family. And he was here legally. And now he's in, he's in, in a prison in El Salvador, where he doesn't belong and where the administration has admitted they screwed up. And the, the possibility that, that we as a local government could potentially play some small role in that is there. And, and something that I think on an issue like this where we may have direct effect on the, on the path of someone's, someone's, someone's life that we would later regret, that we, you know, we have a responsibility to, to be proactive. that we, you know, we have a responsibility to, to be proactive on that. So, uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll take it up. Okay? Um, anything else? All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you.